Six thirty? All right, everyone, mic's on. Mark? Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Genoa Township Board of Trustees Special Trustee Meeting, August 4th, 2022. The time is 6:30 PM. A full and accurate account of this meeting's audio recording can be found at www.jenowatwp.com. Present at this time, we have Trustee Goodman, Trustee Antonetts, myself, Trustee Vaughn, and our Fiscal Officer, Pat Meyer, Corey Fleg, Deputy Director of Roads and Buildings and Grounds, Police Chief Steve Gamel, Director of Human Resources, Linda Greco, Director of Roads and Buildings and Grounds, Bob Matthews, Fire Chief Joe Ponzi, Director of Zoning and Development, Joe Schaefer, and our Township Administrator, Paul Wise. And at this time, I'd like-
Call the rule?
Yes, sorry.
Rule called, trustees. Mr. Antonetts?
Here.
Ms. Goodman?
Here.
Ms. Vaughn?
Here. Thank you. Sorry. All right. At this time, I'd like to ask our Administrator, Paul Wise, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wise. And at this time, I'll turn it over to our Fiscal Officer, Pat Meyer.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things tonight. One, I would ask approval of the minutes for the Special Trustee Meeting of July 11th.
I'll move to approve the July 11th, 2022 Special Trustee Meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Mr. Antonetts?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
The only other thing I have for you, and I'll have it for your review afterwards and your signatures, are reconciliation of the bank account of July, I'm sorry, June 30th of this year, 2022. We're going to stick to this year. That's okay. Total wall funds are $24,702,908.03. Our pooled investments are $21,416,519.77, and our primary account of $3,286,388.26. So I'll have that for your review and your signature. Unless you have anything for me, that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Next, I'm going to open it up to public comment. So if there's anyone here from the public who would like to speak, you can step up to the microphone.
Hello, my name is Gus.
Hold on, sorry. First, name and address, and the microphone wasn't on. So if you could start over.
My name is Gus Nguyenhaus. I live on Sharmar Drive, just down the way here, Alpha Freeman. I sent in an email just last week to Trustee Goodman. I appreciate you inviting me to come over here. I wanted to express my concern and request that you guys revisit the ordinance regarding, what would we call it, firearms discharging in the township. I moved here about 15 years ago, I'd say, and when someone told me that was allowed here in town, I, to be honest, still didn't believe it until about a couple of months ago. We've got a neighbor up the street, a few houses up around the block. I'd say within the past three months or so, on a weekly basis, probably about a half hour at a time, 50 to 100-plus gunshots, one after another, after another. It could be Sunday morning, it could be Wednesday afternoon. It's always different. But it's usually while you're having a family barbecue, or while the dog's out, the kids are out playing in the back of the woods there. My kids, along with several other kids in the neighborhood, are typically back there. And the backstop is right up against that area, so not only is it a, you know, a noise issue, but it's foremost a safety issue. My kids and the dog know to run inside when they hear it. I don't know that everyone else does. And I worry that the backstop, if there is even a objective size with all that to that, I'm not sure, but I don't believe there is. So I'd like to kind of bring that up in discussion, see what it would take to get that kind of on the agenda to revisit, especially with the density. That would be my last point, is I assume this ordinance was made quite a while back when the density was not nearly what it is in town. So to just have houses on top of houses and people discharging firearms seems quite ridiculous, to be honest to me. So that's my request. If you have any questions, let me know. But my question would be, what would it take to kind of put this on the agenda next week or next month, sorry, and what would it take to move forward with it?
Thank you. Go ahead.
You want me to do it?
If you wanted to.
Alrighty. You and I have communicated, and I appreciate you bringing this forward to us. Since we've been going back and forth with emails, I know you've also been working with Lieutenant McMillan with the police force, and I believe that he has looked into some additional information that he has shared with Mr. Wise.
I received, right before the meeting, he said he finally got with a county prosecutor and said that there's really not anything that the township can do. He said, "In the recent years, the Ohio Vice Code has been more favoring gun rights and gun usage, and so there's really no ordinance concerning shooting that we are allowed to enforce. Maybe the noise ordinance can be enforced." No, not even that, Chief?
If you look at the noise ordinance, the only restriction it has on gunfire is repeated discharging of firearms for an unreasonably long period of time under the circumstances then existing. So again, the language is very vague. What's unreasonable to one person may not be unreasonable to another person. We have no guidance on what's reasonable or not, and I don't know what the term "under the circumstances then existing" means. So without some kind of changing of the noise ordinance, it's really not enforceable.
Yeah, it seemed, I read that. It seems very poorly written at best. It's awfully subjective, and I can tell you that your opinion would change on that if it's your next-door neighbor. Real quick. I understand that there's people that would vote no because there's the right to do this and that, and that's fine, and I understand that and I respect it, but when it's your neighbor and it's right next door and kind of ruining your weekend, it'll, I think, change people's opinion on it. So, you know, it's been quiet for 15 years from where I sit, but these last three months have been ridiculous, and it really is a safety issue. And I don't want something to happen five, 10 years from now, when we all knew about this and knew how easily it is for an accident to happen. It needs to be looked at. So I don't know how there would be nothing that could be done. I understood it was up to the trustees to make these ordinances, change these ordinances. So, I mean, there's got to be something else to it.
That's one of the charms of having, living in a township and having rural character. We're in a neighborhood where we're listed as rural, so people hunt and fish on our properties. So there's nothing I can do unless you lobby state legislature to change the gun right rules. So other than that, there's nothing our trustees can do at this time to change the law.
And that ordinance you talked about, that's state-written, or that is?
The noise ordinance is written, is passed by the trustees.
Okay. Well, I'd ask that we relook at that then, because the words that were in there, I could certainly have my opinion on what side of that is. Maybe we can all camp out for a day and listen to that. I'll have you all over for a barbecue, but it needs to be looked at, so.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Public comment? All right. Thank you. Hearing none. We'll move on to trustee comments. Anyone?
Yeah, I have a brief email I'd like to address quickly. We have a lot of important things to do, but we had received an email from a resident addressed to Paul Wise, Trustee Vaughn, Trustee Goodman, myself, and Pat Myers essentially must be concerned about me jeopardizing my term because it's asking specific information about my oath, which I'd like to address. So I did take the oath as required by Ohio law on December 27th. It was administered by Trustee Vaughn in this building. One witness to it was Catherine Nelson, who is a good friend and supporter of mine, and there is a paper copy signed by me and Renee in the office. There are some questions on here that are beyond my ability to address, which is, they're asking if we would consider, or should we consider, requiring the zoning commission and the zoning appeals, the BZA members, to also take an oath, which I don't know how we address that question. I did call Mark Fowler about this specific email, and he confirmed that everything we've done is lawful and ethical, so I'm hoping this puts this to bed. But we may want to talk about, it might be a legitimate question about whether we want the zoning commission members and the BZA members to also take the same oath.
I think, Paul, you heard back, or somebody heard back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, I did copy the board on that part of it. It says, "Mark Fowler gave his opinion that it's not necessary, but you could if you wanted." That's basically it. I don't know of any other local jurisdictions that have an oath of office for townships for their BZA or zoning commissions.
And it's no secret, I mean, this is from former trustee Gephardt. Continue to try to, I don't know what it's trying to do, make sure I fill out my term. But one question was, should the trustees be sworn in before each meeting, just like we do the public and anybody else that speaks? And I don't know if Mark could address that.
The answer was no.
Not necessary.
Yeah.
And you'd think with him being here for whatever, a couple of decades, he would know the answer to that, but that was also in the email, so for the record.
Any?
Any response? I don't know if we want to respond to the email. It's addressed to all of us. We want to respond to that, or I think that's all he asked, requested, is we answer these in public.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
No.
I have no comments this evening. Thank you.
I have a few. Last meeting, I had brought up the issue of solar panels and possibly addressing that in our zoning resolution. I did reach out to a county commissioner, and I was told that the county commissioners did not rule on this issue. They discussed it last fall, but in the end, they got pushed back from landowners and land rights, so they have taken no action. So my recommendation is, when we're looking at this comprehensive plan zoning resolution, we address solar panels in there. I'd like to be proactive rather than reactive. I see Joe coming up, so. If you want to address it now, that's fine.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say, we certainly can look into it. I did want to just point a clarification. We do already have a standard in there regarding solar panels that attach to people's houses. We already allow them. There's a certain distance they can't project above the roofline of a house. Primarily, the solar issue right now going on in Ohio is like the solar farms.
Yep, exactly.
That's the big topic. So is it something we're likely to see here? Doubtful, given the land cost and everything else that's going on, but doesn't mean we shouldn't be prepared. So certainly, it's a very new topic, relatively speaking, so I appreciate we'll add that to the list of stuff we probably need to look into as we talk to the attorneys through the zoning and comp plan process.
Yes.
I just want to mention the thing about, we do allow them attach to houses right now. We probably have almost half a dozen permits actually across the hallway right now. Someone must have gone door-to-door, because we have just seen like a wave of them lately, of people putting them on.
Very good, and thank you for clarifying, because I am referring to solar farms, which seems to be the trend in Ohio. Also, the only other thing I have is my residence hour for this month will be August 13th at 9:00 AM at Center Green Park, from 9:00 to 10:00. And that's it. So moving on, I'll turn it over to Paul Wise for administration.
Thank you, Board. This evening, I'd like to inform the Board that I've received a legal notice from the Delaware County Commissioners that there's going to be a public hearing held coming up in August on the 22nd of August in their offices concerning a ditch petition labeled, it's the Lynetta Lane subdivision watershed drainage improvement project. For decades, the residents along Lynetta Lane have had problem with controlling the flow of water, and so the residents petitioned Delaware Soil and Water to have them study and correct the problem. And so with enough signatures on the ditch petition, they want to move forward, and now there's a final hearing scheduled now with the county commissioners concerning this. Part of the improvement of the waterways through there, and this is quite a big area that they're planning to improve, it runs from Lynetta Lane over on Tausick into Medallion, near the country club, and down into areas of harvest wind. And so there's quite a few homes along the petition. I don't want to get into the minutia of the petition, but the township, by virtue of owning right-of-way, is a party to the petition. And so the county has estimated improvements for the township's end of being $142,323.01. So usually, when there's a hearing like this, I like to represent the township. The Board is most welcome to attend, to discuss if you'd like. If you do want to send me, then a resolution's necessary that, and when there's a soil and water hearing, they want to have a resolution showing your representative is attending. So it's up to you if you want to go and speak on behalf of this or opposed to it, or you want to send me. My opinion is I'm in favor of it, because we've been dealing with water questions down through the area for years. So this should remedy the whole issue and start correcting some of the backflow issues with heavy rain situations. So if you're in favor of this and want me to attend, I've attached a resolution for your consideration.
All right. I'll move to adopt the Lynetta Lane ditch petition as presented.
I'll second.
Yes, thank you. Turning my page. Discussion?
I just, have you been getting any calls, emails from residents opposing this?
Oh, no. No one's, I've heard of no one opposed to it, but I've been hearing about this for the last 10 years.
Yeah, so can you give us a little history? Because this is not a quick process.
No, this isn't. So through the years, we've had residents try to box in their culverts in front of their house. The problem, as you run down Lynetta Lane, the problem gets worse. With the more volume and flow of water, there's more water naturally directed that way also from different areas. And so one of our residents, who used to be a governor, is getting a lot of water flow into this thing, and he was negative on this thing for years, but suddenly he signed the petition, because I think he's finally realizing that the correction would be to go ahead with the process to fix the whole thing, downwater, downstream and upstream from him. So that's it in a nutshell. A lot of residents signed this thing and are wanting the Board to support it and be supportive of this, so. By the way, with the assessment, the commissioners will pass some resolution, but I want to speak on behalf of the township. I want to go for the longest assessment period, if possible, just because this is coming out of our road levy fund. The longer the period, the more we could divide up the $142,000, and it won't negatively adjust Bob's paving programs.
So I did a little math, and if you divide it by five years, it's about $28,000 for Bob a year. If you divide it by 10 years, it's $14,000 a year. Plus, on page one of this document, it says up to 15 years. So it sounds like they would approve up to 15 years, but I think 10 is plenty. Any thoughts on that? My recommendation is that you ask for 10 years, and my understanding is there's no interest.
No interest. It's just put on our tax bill, the township's parcel tax bill for this.
And how much did you say it was at 10 years?
At 10 years is $14,232.30.
That's reasonable.
That's what I think. That's not going to cut too much into your budget.
I mean, they must offer that to the residents.
Yeah, there's a sign, there's a form in here if you wanted to pay cash. So the residence portions may, since there's so many parcels and it's only their frontage, it may be small amounts that they pay. What is, Lynette is about a half a mile long? Or maybe a quarter mile? Something like that, I don't know. So we have all that right-of-way.
Do we have any idea when this will begin and hopefully be finished? No timeframes?
They'll probably need to bid it. Once it's approved, they'll have to go out the bid, which is a couple of month process. I don't know if they'll work in the winter time or not, or maybe halftime in the fall.
Okay. I'm okay with 10. I definitely don't want to do 5.
Yeah, I don't either. Good with that?
I agree.
We go for 10. If they don't give it, then we're at their mercy, I guess. All right. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Antonetts?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
No thanks.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to maintenance and Bob Matthews.
Thank you. First, there's accept the resignation of Aaron Early from the Buildings and Grounds Division.
All right. I'll move to accept the resignation of Buildings and Ground Technician Aaron Early, effective July 29th, 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Antonetts?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
Next up is amend the permanent appropriations for Road and Bridge, the TIF Fund, and General Fund.
All right. I'll move to amend the following 2022 Permanent Appropriations. Road and Bridge Fund capital outlay from $1,365,000 to $1,448,670. TIF Fund capital outlay from $1,060,000 to $1,114,275. General Fund capital outlay from $188,800 to $488,800. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Could I just get a brief summary of what this is, since I'm voting on it?
It's amend the appropriations so that we can cover the purchase orders that are coming up. There's no money in the fund to cover them purchase orders.
What are the purchase orders for?
The first one is, we come out of General Fund, is to move the Township Hall.
Yep.
It's the next resolution's on here.
And the TIF Fund is McCoy's for $26,375. That's for extra work we did on Mount Royal for the resurfacing. So the Shelley Company, our share, oh, not that one. That's, that one is not in any of them. Them are still in the funds that we have budgeted.
Okay.
So McCoy's to $26,000 is what you're meant in the TIF Fund, and the other two are the ovary Shelley, or Sodda material on McCoy's are for the overruns on Cypress Court and Bentley Place, where we had to dig the whole road and put a base in it.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Roll call.
Mr. Antonetts?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Motion carries.
Then next up is the purchase orders.
Okay. I'll move to approve the blanket purchase order in the amount of $300,000 for the moving of Station 2 to McNamara Park. The Ohio Facilities Construction Commission will grant the township 50% of the total project. Delaware County will grant 40%. Delaware County will grant forty percent of the total project. And Genoa Township will match ten percent of the total project. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
What's Station Two?
The Old Town Hall on Tussacks and Big Walnut.
Oh, on the corner up here?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Mr. Antonetts?
Where is it going and what are we doing with it?
It's going to McNamara Park just past, outside the rest, the restroom on the east end. It's going to the west and it's going to be renovated and used for parks events.
This money includes both the moving and the renovation.
Correct.
And it was part of the state capital grant that we got last year.
And our out-of-pocket is thirty thousand out of about three hundred thousand?
You got it.
That's the maximum. It won't be that. But that is the maximum.
I assume this has been in the works for a while?
A long time.
I'll stop talking.
It's okay, you're voting on it. So, if you have more questions, ask.
Another comment, Delaware County has got forty percent in this because they're planning a roundabout there. So, they're wanting us to move this thing.
Move it or lose it.
More questions?
Mr. Antonetts?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. And to piggyback on that, Bob, can you give everybody an update of the timeframe?
Yeah, the timeframe is I got a contractor that's going to do the foundation and I'm planning on starting that next week or the week after the latest and get the mover in there to jack up the building and move the two blocks we got to move it. It should happen pretty quick within the next month or two. And the only bad part is a big moment will have to be closed while they jack the house up and move it. So, I haven't got them details, but as soon as I do, I'll let you guys know.
Is it empty?
I don't know. Is it empty?
Is the building empty?
Uh-uh.
It's got some PD stuff in it.
Renters left some stuff in it. Previous renters have no legal obligation.
All right. Thank you, Bob. And I'm looking forward to that whole process taking place. All right, next you have?
More purchases orders.
It's that time of year. I'll move to approve the following purchase order. McCoy paving for sixty-one thousand, six hundred and three dollars. Sciota Materials, fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. McCoy paving, twenty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Shelley Company, one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
You want to explain these, Bob?
Yeah, the McCoy's, the first one is overages on Bentley and Cypress. So, is on Cypress. The McCoy for twenty-six is concrete work on Mount Royal that we went over on. And the Shelley Company is the county resurfacing program. We just, I just hadn't wrote a PO for it because we didn't know what it was yet.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I do.
Yep.
So, I'm going to put my civil engineering hat on. Just because I deal with this almost on a daily basis, contractors asking for extras. Who reviews these extras to confirm that they're legitimate and fair?
I do.
You do? And you're comfortable with these?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
Mr. Antonetts?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes. Ohio Public Works Commission?
The next is the OPWC grant.
I'll ask my questions after the motion. So, I'll move to establish a capital project fund to account for the Ohio Public Works Commission grant monies in accordance with section fifty-seven oh five point oh nine of the Ohio Revised Code. The purpose of the fund is to account for the related revenues and expenditures for the Mount Royal Avenue Improvement Project. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions?
Sure, what is it?
Yeah.
Donna has account for OPWC through a separate bookkeeping to say what we had to go ahead and pay. We had to appropriate what the cost of the project was. OPWC pays a certain amount. We pay a certain amount, but it's all got to be done in our books. So, it's legal. And that's why she's establishing this.
And it's easier for auditing also when we, when the auditors come in to have their own separate fund showing bills in, money out.
What have you done in the past?
Same thing.
Same thing. So, it's just something you do all the time?
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
Establishing the funds, that new fund will be called Capital Project Fund, OPWC Fund Capital Outlay. That money will be there, so the auditor says, okay, that's where that money went.
Once this money is spent, this disappears?
And we reestablish.
Yes, okay, got it.
So, we try not to have the extra accounts.
All right. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Antonetts? Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Carries.
You're approving the permanent, twenty-twenty-two permanent appropriation for that fund.
Okay, I'll move to approve the twenty-twenty-two permanent appropriation for the Capital Project Fund, OPWC Fund capital outlay at two hundred and forty thousand, one hundred dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Antonetts?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman? Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
The next one is an authorization, but it's got the wrong name on it. It says Shelley Company, not Shelley and Sands. They're two different companies.
Right, which one is it?
It says Shelley Company.
Shelley Company, okay. On the motion, but not on the title.
And the verbiage just says it right.
Okay, all right. So, I'll move to authorize a purchase order to the Shelley Company in the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred dollars, which includes OPWC grant money in the amount of one hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars. Genoa Township's matching amount of twenty thousand dollars and Delaware County's portion of forty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars for the twenty-twenty-two OPWC grant for Mount Royal Avenue Improvements Project. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Roll call.
Antonetts? Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
The final thing is, well, not the final thing, resurfacing update. We are done with the resurfacing. The only thing I got to black copy is some trails. But the resurfacing is all done. We did sorry. We resurfaced one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. We resurfaced twenty-eight streets in Township this year.
Very good. Well done. And please share that with the crew because I know they work hard.
Yep.
Yeah. Job well done.
That's awesome.
Is the road repaving project finished for the year?
It is except for striping on Mount Royal. And striping on Big Walnut gets restriped and so does Worthington Road north of Lewis Center.
Okay.
That's the only thing that's left to do. They were supposed to be here this week, but we're running out weeks, so I don't know where they're at.
Okay. But the pay, all of the resurfacing is finished. It's just the details that are to be completed. Very good.
And the final thing is the CDL policy. And I'll let Linda talk about that.
Thanks. Okay, so, just so you know, I did go over everything with Bob before I started work on this. And then, I contacted Dave Reepenhoff the first day he was back on vacation. And we worked together to put together the items that I sent you. When I had it put in your books, it would be the highlighted two pages that are at the top, it's got a yellow highlight on it because I also included the old unrevised, the original that we were revising. Okay, just in case you needed to check them. So, I don't know if you had a chance to actually read through them. They're pretty short. I mean, I shortened it by quite a bit and pretty much took out all of the things that didn't make sense to us. And to be honest, we've been doing this for a long time. So, we kind of want to keep the procedure the same. It's very simple, just paid by phone with a card. The only thing different with that is that we have additional costs now. They have added the driver training that's required. So, total cost for the CDL is just under seven thousand dollars, which is why we're putting together the agreement that we, that I've also included. So, the policy is what I sent to Dave. And I pretty much just, I did track changes on the whole thing. Took out everything I thought was, that we did, that was not necessary. Added the things that I thought we needed to put in there. It's pretty cut and dry. It basically talks about the issue that you wanted, which is the prorating for one year and two years. And also, just basically says that if certain things are not met, that then they're going to have to owe whatever is appropriate on this page. And then, I asked Dave to form the agreement from that, which he did. And actually, there were a couple more revisions. He sent me a copy on Tuesday and at late at night. And I looked at that and I had to talk to him yesterday, actually, to revise it again. But I think these are what we actually will need. I think they're simple. The one major change that I'm going to mention that we didn't talk about before is that instead of deducting this or saying that we're going to deduct this from their final check, I've changed that to, and Dave agreed, there were several reasons why, but changed it to just it being due upon their release from the township and knowing that they probably aren't going to be able to pay that. And just so you know, one check would not cover even half of the cost if it was after the one-year part and certainly not if they fail. So, at that point, I think what we'll do is, you know, have a discussion with them when we have their resignation and let them know, go over this again and see what type of repayment plan we can set up. We wouldn't get the full amount, no matter what we did. But it turns out that there are some reasons that we wouldn't want to use up their entire pay anyway. So, and I ran this by Donna. I wanted to call her, check that Bob made sure he understood and talked to Donna about it. And Donna and I are both relieved because we also were concerned about Opers and with the fire with OPNF because, because of the earnable salary that they consider. And we would have had to figure out a way to make that okay. So, I think Donna and I, we did have Plan B, but it still would require, you know, some juggling. And also, Opers and OPNF would probably contact us wanting to know what we were doing. So, given those two things, it just seemed easier if we just do an agreement of repayment with the employee rather than messing with their earnings.
Okay.
Were there any questions? I'm assuming you probably had a chance to at least look at these. And did you have any questions or?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Why did you remove the procedure?
I did remove procedure.
And find that necessary?
It, let me go back to where we have one with procedure. The procedure really didn't quite make sense. So, that was one of the things that Dave and I took out at the very end. Let me see. That would be in the old one.
Yeah.
The procedure. Okay, so, the way this is going to work is during the first interview, one of the interview, and I'm going to be doing that now because of Aaron leaving. So, during the first interview, this is one of the things, just like everything else that the township, that the employee will have with the township. This is going to be discussed thoroughly at that point so they understand. The next thing would be if there's an offer of employment. And when that happens and they agree, then they come in and do paperwork. We go over everything again. There really is no time or place or reason for this person to come to any one of us to have this authorized or not authorized, which is what that procedure said. It's a given that we're doing. So, you know, when Dave re-looked at that, he understood that. And also, we are not requesting a reimbursement. You know, there's no, we're not going to do a reimbursement. We are just simply picking up the fees like we do now and paying for them. So, there is no reason for paperwork to exchange hands or be gathered or whatever. It's going to be kind of cut and dry like it is now. Does that answer or?
It does.
Okay.
I have one more.
Okay.
So, there was this asterisk, which I like this. The Township will not reimburse for failed attempts of testing. But it looks like you've removed that asterisk. But I think you've got it in language, which if I'm right, says if the employee fails to secure a CDL with necessary endorsements upon the application, pay by the Township, refund them a hundred percent of the cost.
Correct, and that-
So, that, is that the seven, it takes seven thousand dollars to find out if you passed?
No, they're, yeah.
So, they need to pass.
We're going to pay for the application, the driving lessons, the everything. And then, it's up to them to pass now. That being said, we're going to really give it our all to make sure they pass, you know? So, we have things in place that if there is someone, not everybody is good at testing, right? Any form of testing. So, if we find someone like that, that we have things that we're going to work with them on. So, I don't know that that's going to be an issue. But the asterisk, just so you understand, that was actually referring to attempts. Well, they get four attempts anyway. So, I, there's, to me, there's no reason to put that in there. There is a reason to put in, however, later. I wanted it to be perfectly clear that if they don't pass, they're not going to be able to work here and they're going to have to repay that. So, that's what that is. But we're going to do everything possible to make that not happen for them, so.
Okay, but this doesn't say if they don't pass, they can't work here.
That's a given. That'll be, that's understood. They have to have a CDL. They can't work here without a CDL. Bottom line, no CDL, you know, you can't work here. So, they understand that from the get-go.
Interesting. Okay, I don't have any more questions.
I'm fine with this. I think that it's well-written and it's kind of what we talked about as far as the reimbursement. But I do have two questions. One of which is it talks about Genoa Township paying or will pay, et cetera, et cetera. I want to be clear that we're not backpaying. If someone comes to us with a CDL, they can't present us something and say, oh, I thought you meant you'd pay for what I already had, had someplace else.
Right, right.
So, we want to be clear on that. It may be implied legally, I'm no attorney, but that's a concern. The other thing is when you were talking about repayments and reimbursements, you talked about establishing a repayment plan, which is fine. But if I heard you said we might not get it all back, why would we not get it all back? No, I didn't, if I said that, I didn't mean it back. Perhaps I misunderstood. Yeah, I, yeah, no, that's, we're going to get it back. So, the one thing that we did, you know, I don't like mean agreements. You know, I want it to be understandable. It's an agreement, we're adults, right? And I like to treat the employee the same way. But I did have Dave put in there that if, let's see. Yeah, the legal action thing? About the legal actions. So, that if we do, so, so, in the unlikely event that that would happen, we would have to, or I would want us to go to the prosecutor and have that filed and make it an actual legal action if someone didn't want to pay us back. We've never, with the others, with Fire and Police, we've never really run into that. It hasn't been quite this amount. So, I am, I'm a little, my heartstrings play a little bit for the employee because of the amount. However, this is really ensuring their career choice. They're going to need a CDL. So, you know, this is the best way for them to get one. They're going to need a CDL, so, you know, this is the best way for them to get one. So I think this, I think it ended up being fair.
Have we had folks in the past that have not completed a CDL and we've let go?
No, we have not, but we've had some that went right after the fourth time.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
But again, because of that too, you know, I talked to Bob. So we do have something in place for people that need that little extra bit of tutoring in all of the three areas. So I think we're good. We want them to succeed.
I would like some clarification on the CDL incentive agreement, number three. Can you clarify, when does the date start for the three years? When they start the CDL program or when it ends?
Uh, it should say here that-
It says, following township's last payment or reimbursement under this agreement. So is that at the end when they-
No, it would be after the issuance of, in other words, the day that they get their CDL.
That's what I was wondering.
Right. And so that's one thing, I'm going to have Chrissy make a copy of that. I'm going to attach it to this so that there's no question. And I wanted it that date because Dave had suggested some other date, but it was kind of random, like it would be different for every person. And I'd rather have it set in stone. And to me, that is, now, we always know it's going to be the day that they're issued that, just like we get a license. That's the first day that we get to have them use it and they have it. So to me, that made sense.
Yep, that's what I was hoping it was, but I just would like to clarify. Thank you. Anyone else, questions?
Do we need a motion to put this into place?
I don't believe we ever did the agreement. So that for certain has to. We do have the other thing though that needs, that was never approved. There was nothing on the agreement, but, but the policy you actually did, correct? So that just needs to be amended.
So I need to make a motion now?
To amend the policy and then you're going to want to do a motion for the repayment. Yeah, and it was, you know, it was, he changed the name of it. So it's a CDL incentive repayment agreement.
Yep.
And before you make that motion, if I can just mention one more thing. As I was talking to Dave, there are some issues with the firefighters' agreement and also the police use the same agreement. So that being said, I'm gonna, I've already told you I need to meet with him. I just want to explain it further, why we need to change some of that. But I, once that's done, if it's okay with board, I'm going to go ahead and talk to Dave and we're going to rewrite the other two match. We just, I just want all the policies to look alike, pretty much alike, right?
Yep, that was the goal.
So as long as it's okay with board, I'm going to do that also after I meet with these guys. Okay.
On the hook. Okay, so the motion, I need to make a motion to amend the CDL policy? Do I need a date when that was?
That was originally passed in March.
March.
I think it's, I think it says here, policy effective April 15, 2022, right?
So do that one?
It's, I mean, it's written here, so, yeah. So it's, that's the date.
All right, I'm going to attempt this, so somebody can correct it. I'll make a motion to amend the CDL policy passed and made effective April 15, 2022, and to approve the CDL incentive repayment agreement. Effective August, do we want it today? August 4, 2022.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Do we need any amended, is it good, good the way it is? All right, discussion?
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Anything else with maintenance? All right, then we'll move on to fire.
Good evening, Board. Would you like to do the supplemental appropriation first?
Whatever you want to do.
Okay, you should have before you the request for the supplemental appropriation. And just for point of clarification, that is a request to move $15,000 from our contingency account, which is the 2192-930 account, into our fuel account, operating supplies for fuel, which is the 2192-220-420, in the amount of $15,000. And very simple explanation is fuel costs.
Yeah, we get it.
Diesel, obviously, all the big trucks run on diesel. And we have received an appropriation report today from Donna. And basically, I watch these on a percentage basis of how far we are through the year. As of today, we're 59% of the way through the year and we have used 90% of our fuel budget for the year.
Yikes.
So we hope that diesel will continue to come down and also hope that 15,000 will be enough to get us through the rest of the year.
Wow. Okay, I'll move to approve a supplemental appropriation in the fire fund in the amount of $15,000 from account 2192-930-930-0000 to 2192-220-420-0002. Do I have a second? Discussion?
Antoinette?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, second item on our agenda for this evening would be, you should also have in your packets a memorandum that I sent to you all in preparation for the meeting this evening to have a discussion with you all on the purchase of a replacement aerial ladder truck, aerial ladder apparatus, that would replace our current aerial ladder. In the memo, I outlined to you that the current ladder truck that we have was placed in service in 2007. And at that time, Chief Honeycutt put in place a plan that that truck would remain in service for 15 years. And there are also detailed that we made a financial plan to put funds into our vehicle replacement schedule to fund the replacement of that apparatus, which we have done over the past 15 years. Net result of us placing the funds in the vehicle replacement plan has put a total of 1,300, I'm sorry, $1,319,000 specifically earmarked for the replacement of the apparatus. So we are at the 15-year mark for that vehicle. And we're looking at the replacement. Back in May, we brought together a committee of people within the fire department to begin to explore and to put together and basically, as we call it, spec or specify, a new piece of equipment that would replace that vehicle, which they have successfully done in a very, very short period of time, three months. A normal time when we're not working under financial deadlines and constraints, sometimes that process will take up to nine months. But the committee has worked very, very hard to be able to, for me, to be able to come in front of you this evening to tell you where we stand at and to discuss this further. The committee has, through their work, has examined multiple manufacturers of aerial apparatus, examined the state bid process of the three major manufacturers in the United States of aerial apparatus. And they have deduced that their recommendation to me and also mine to you would be that we would explore entering into a contractual agreement with Sutton Corporation out of Dublin, Ohio, for the purchase of a new aerial apparatus. The number that we received, and I don't know that we'll have any refinements on it, I do not expect this number to go up, is $1,674,213. So if you would like to hear a little bit of what the difference is, I'm willing to entertain that conversation or at least explain to you why there's a difference. If not, if you have specific questions or I can-
Can you just give us a high-level explanation?
Absolutely. So obviously, I think everyone's aware that, I don't think anyone could have anticipated the price increases that we've seen across the board on everything. And also in the manufacturing and the supply chain issues and the cost of materials. We were on track, Chief Honeycutt and I, when the vehicle was about 10 years old, we started yearly touching base with our vendor to say, hey, if we wanted to build the same truck that we have today, what would that cost be? And then we would make an adjustment. And of course, it always goes up a little bit, you know, there's never going to get cheaper. And so we would make an adjustment financially of the funds that we were putting into the vehicle replacement schedule. So at the 15-year mark, as we were hearing the numbers, that we were going to be on target, and we were, right up until the pandemic. And then, of course, the pandemic hit and no one knew anything that was going to happen as far as costs go. And then, of course, coming out of the pandemic, we knew that there was going to be an increase. I was estimating at about 1.5. And obviously, that is a little higher than what I was guessing. And quite honestly, that 1.5 was a guess. The manufacturer has been forthcoming with us. They incurred approximately 10% across the board cost increase in January of 2022. And in the memo that I sent to you all, they are anticipating a cost increase of a minimum of 3% in the month of September and another cost increase in December of probably the same figure, 3% or more. So being that we have the $1.3 million in the bank, and as I said in the memo to you, we did discuss back earlier in the year when you all were appropriating the rescue plan funds. We said, hey, we're not ready to deal with this yet, but we're not closing the door to it. So I'm here to kind of nudge the door back open, per se, on the rescue plan funds and see if we could entertain the discussion of moving forward on what it would take to make this purchase happen. So also realize that we are at the 15-year mark. That would be where we anticipated closely. We should have probably been a little bit ahead of this. But to be honest with you, during the pandemic and all the shutdowns, you really couldn't even place orders. So it was fruitless to try to get yourself in line when they were having a hard time building trucks and they weren't even talking to people. And we experienced the same thing with the vendor that builds the ambulances. At a certain point in time, they just said, we can't even give you a cost because we just don't know what it's going to be. So basically, if you look at the difference between what we have in the bank and the cost of the vehicle, the difference is $355,213. And I would request that you would consider appropriating that amount, the leftover rescue plan funds, to make this purchase possible. And then I'm willing to entertain other questions as you all may have.
What was the difference?
I did check with Donna to see how much ARPA money we have not dedicated. It was 500-ish, 522. Yeah, that's it.
Just so you know, the total revenues from ARP, you want me to let you know?
Go ahead.
Yeah. In three distributions for ARP, there's $2,954,838.25. Currently, we've encumbered $2,432,778.25, leaving $522,060 left. I don't know if you want to say that. So that money is in there. So.
Now, it also says further down, though, that assuming our truck is in good condition, you know, when this one, the new one, would be finished, that we could recoup between $250,000 and $400,000.
That is correct.
The concern is that we need that money now to pay for the truck?
That is correct.
Because if we, we, okay, now, I also saw something somewhere about paying for it upfront, getting a price reduction. We have any idea how much that might be?
I do not. We didn't, I didn't go as far as to ask the representative because I didn't know where we were going to go tonight as far as yes or no. Definitely willing, I can have that for you. I'll send it to you. If the choice is yes and you want that information, I can have it for you tomorrow morning. I could probably actually have it for you tonight.
Seems like it should be a decent amount of money if we're paying $1.7 million upfront and they get their own float on that for 24 months.
Yeah, that's where I'm at.
I mean, because if they take our money and put it in the bank, they're earning the float, we're not.
Absolutely.
That's a great point. So I don't want to get into the details of the terms, but I mean, is it something where we would, could have put a deposit down and not tie up almost $2 million of our money that they're going to sit on? I mean, I don't know if you have the answer to that, but it does seem-
We can speak to that. Captain Work is here this evening and he's provided, Captain Work was the chair of the apparatus committee and he can answer a couple of those questions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I did speak with the vendor yesterday. I don't have specifics about financial incentives, although he said that they, at this point in time, are really very negligent. It does not require anything but an ink signature to order the truck. And we literally write them a check when we take delivery. So there is no requirements to put money down. If we choose to go forward tonight, I will look into it further to see if there are, you know, some incentives that would be in our benefit, you know, if we needed to put a little bit down. But there are no requirements. And his words to me in a generalization were that they're very insignificant right now.
We're probably making 2% or 3% off of our investments right now.
Yeah, I have the exact numbers. I just know that the overnight lending rates are up, right? So people are making more float on money than they were two years ago, a year ago, what have you. And, you know, I, my only thought was, if paying it upfront gets us, hey, if you pay it upfront, it's only 1.5 million, you know, different story. But if it's, hey, if you pay it upfront, it's 1.698, we'll give you a $2,000 discount or something.
It's not worth it.
You know, that's not worth it.
Exactly.
So, you know, you got to weigh that, obviously. I'm preaching to the choir on that, you know? Paying upfront is great for Danny Sutton and his company because they've got that money. But if there's not a big incentive and they're okay with a signature saying, we will pay, then why would we give them the money?
Exactly. And back when I spoke to the representative back in March, they were in the same situation that the incentives were not large. And quite honestly, he just told me, he said, you're better off just signing the contract and holding on to your money. That's another reason why I didn't really explore it because hadn't heard that there was any great changes in any incentives. We got some good incentives when we bought the Medic, but they're a smaller company. So I can see where it's, would incentivize them to do that versus Sutton Corporation.
Worth asking the question, though.
Absolutely.
Pardon my naivete, but, I mean, would this be like a trade-in? You can negotiate at the time of purchase.
They're not a dealer. They build trucks to spec, they're not a dealer, they don't have a lot where you can switch them in and out with Danny. I don't think Sutton takes trade-
So the onus is going to be on the township to sell this at some future date when the new one comes in and you're going to have to find the best deal we can get.
Correct. And we've already been down that road. We've talked with a vendor Captain Downey has, and that's where you got the figures in the third paragraph of the value of the vehicle. Right now, a couple of months ago, when they valued it, they said, hey, that truck right now, if you want to get rid of it, we can probably get $450,000 out of it. But of course, in two years, which is the manufacturing time, that price is going to depreciate. So I like to play conservative and their low number was 250,000. And so I like to stick to 250,000. If we get anything above that, then to me, that's a win. But still, $250,000 to put back into our fund, I think that's a win-win.
So given the supply chain issues, staffing issues, I'm sure that fire companies are experiencing the same kinds of things. You know, it says in here- You know, it says in here approximately two years. Is there anything, if they go beyond the two years, any incentive back to us?
I did not ask that question.
I'm not aware of any at this time, no.
Okay, so we could theoretically get this three years from now.
Usually, there's a performance clause in the contract.
Thank you.
And that's pretty standard language in the last couple of trucks that we've built. I do not have the whole 114-page contract.
There's a 114-page document for this truck.
And like I said, I can get that answer for you, but usually, there is a performance clause.
That's the term I couldn't remember.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's pretty standard. It's been on all the trucks. I would assume that they are still adhering to it, but that's also why they're telling us 20 to 24 months.
Sure.
And it's just a matter of, there's a little buffer there of who gets in line in front of us and what are they asking to be built.
As long as there's some performance clause in there, I'm fine with that. And I would concur that you want to get in before the next set of increases, and everybody's having trouble getting people and things right now. So if we know we're going to do it, there's no sense waiting and paying more.
Yeah, 3% is 51,000.
Yeah.
And then the next 3% is on top of that.
On top of the 51.
117.51, so it's even more. So you're looking at $110,000 if you don't order it by December.
Yeah, if we.
If you want to be on order this month.
Yeah, if we waited and had to go through the 2%, 3% cost increases, that total figure for the truck would be $1,776,000.
That's one increase.
I'm sorry. Is that right?
Right.
No, the first, the 164, there may be a mathematical, no, that's 100,000.
I just use 1.7 million rounded.
Oh, well, I was doing.
If I was 1.03, it puts me at 17.51. And if you do 1.03 again, puts you at 18.18.
He's using rounded numbers. I was using actual.
Well, and several years ago, we set up, the finance committee helped us set up this vehicle replacement schedule for both police and fire. So, you know, we're at that point. We did it for a reason.
So, and, you know, just for clarity, you know, this is what we deem a frontline piece of apparatus on any sort of structure fire that truck is on it. There's a difference between the calls that the engine goes on or the ladder truck if it's a single vehicle response, but it is a frontline piece of apparatus. It goes on any sort of report of a structure fire, smoke in a residence, smoke in a building. I mean, it is a, it's a necessary truck for us.
I think that's important for the public to know that this isn't just for a ladder, and it is helpful in fighting fires, even a residential fire that provides additional access that you might not otherwise get.
That's correct. Yeah, so we, over the years, I mean, the standard question we always get is, why do we have the size ladder truck that we do? Being that we don't have high rises in the township. And that answer is correct. We don't have any high rises. But if you drive through a lot of the neighborhoods, the difficulty that we encounter is what we call the setback of the home from the street line, or what we call the curb line. And typically, those vary from anywhere from 50 to 75 feet. So for us to be able to place the ladder truck in the street, set up the jacks, which sets us back from the curb line some, and still be able to access the roof of the house, which is critical for us, and/or the front-facing windows to perform victim rescue, we need the size of ladder that we have to be able to perform that work.
And so I've met with Chief Ponzi and Dave Tuesday?
Yesterday.
And got an education.
Yeah.
And I think, that's why I think it's important for the public, the taxpayers, residents, to know that my, one of my questions was, well, I mean, is this thing just sitting in the garage and they're not putting miles on it, we're replacing it because we want to? And the answer I was provided was, surprisingly to me, is how much that is used and how valuable it is. So I trust your judgment. That's what we pay you for. My only hesitation is taking that money out of ARPA money. So my question would be, is there alternatives to using that money? Is what, is can you finance it and have the fire department pay a loan for the 400-some-thousand? Or is that foolish?
Well, but if, two years.
Well, this is, ARPA is found money, right?
If we didn't pay for this until two years out, how much more are you going to accrue on an annual basis?
On, how much more am I going to accrue?
In your fund for the fire truck. Because if we don't pay for it right now, we don't need that money.
There's no point in paying for it now, is what I'm hearing. Let's keep our money.
1.6 times 3% for a year.
Yeah.
You're going to have a little extra cash.
Absolutely. And you're coming up short, $355,000. It's not a huge amount, really. I mean, no, it's your budget. I don't mean to.
It's huge for the average Joe.
Well, it's not 355, there's 20 cents from that. Trying to think on ARP, we have a certain time to spend that money as well, so.
2026.
2026, but it has to be dedicated by 2024. End of 2024.
So I think, you know, if you don't spend the 522 between now and then, you can wait and go, okay, it's time to pay Sutton.
Yeah.
We only need 232 out of here instead of 320.
Yeah, I'm glad you came to us because I will watch what we spend that money on from now on, and it better be more important than the ladder truck.
And I think you can say, I think you can say as a board, I'm not, clearly, I don't get to make that decision, but we're going to help you with the ARP funds, just to not, we don't know how much.
We don't know how much, yeah.
It could be up to 322, but it might not be.
Well, my thing is your interest and the whatever you get for the current ladder truck. You could offset your costs, so how much are you going to need? I don't know, we'll wait and see. But I would say move forward.
Okay, so.
The other thing, before you speak, so I'm going to help you out here. The other thing that I keep thinking about is we cut the fire levy in order to get the parks levy on the ballot so that we could alleviate the general fund. And we always said, if a department, police or fire, needs extra money, that's what the general fund's for. So I do, I am in support of filling in whatever you need. It's just all depends on where we get it from.
And I think you've answered the question by saying that when the time comes to write the check, whatever the difference is, we'll get that support. And that's what I needed to hear, and that's what we needed to know.
I think that's fair.
So that I can go back to the committee members to call the sales representative tomorrow and say, let's go. Because, and Dave can attest to this, I think we're probably at about a 90% complete on.
I would say so, yeah.
We feel that we can have a contract ready for you at the September meeting. And that way, and that meeting is September 1, I believe. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's September 1st.
And that also, unless Sutton decides between now and the end of the month to enact that sales increase on September 1, we get the feeling that it's not going to be September 1. So hopefully, that'll put us in under that deadline of the price increase.
Okay.
Even if they.
Tell that salesperson, are you going to meet on September 1? He needs to keep that price increase.
That would.
That salesperson, if you're out of way to do it, sell a 1.7 million dollar truck. Just a guy, just a sales guy talking.
Well, if you need us to meet, we'll meet. If you need a resolution.
So anything else? Proceed.
A motion tonight, then.
Okay.
I don't think we need a motion, do we?
I don't think so.
You have our word that we'll help you out.
Okay, and that's all we needed this evening.
Okay, very good.
And we'll see you in September.
115 pages for you to review. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have zoning with Joe Schaefer.
Good evening, trustees. Just need to look at the agenda so I make sure I do this in the right order for you. So first, we're going to do an acknowledgement of a zoning commission recommendation. So on Monday, July 18, 2022, the Genoa Township Zoning Commission heard testimony on the subject zoning map amendment and preliminary development plan, that being a CC case number 2022-03, the courtyards at Big Walnut, which proposes to rezone approximately 55.861 acres of property located on the northern side of Big Walnut Road, also known as parcel 317-2400-103200 to planned residential district in order to construct 91 single-family dwellings. Said meeting was a continuation of hearings that previously had been conducted on April 11th and June 13th of this year. Following the close of testimony, the zoning commission deliberated and passed the following. One, a motion to recommend approval of the requested rezoning to PRD that passed by a 3 to 2 vote. And two, a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary development plan associated with the rezoning that, including all divergences, which also passed by a 3 to 2 vote. As such, the Development Zoning Department requests, one, the trustees consider passing a motion that formally acknowledges receipt of the zoning commission's recommendation of approval for said application. I recommend that be done this evening.
Okay, I will move that the board acknowledge the recommendation of the zoning commission's recommendations for approval of applications for CC 2022-03 courtyards at Big Walnut. Do I have a second?
Second.
Very good. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Antonett?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. The second item I'm asking for this evening regarding this matter is that the trustees set a public hearing date, including time and place for said application, within 30 days of this meeting, which would be September 3, as well as a date and time when revised. Materials to be reviewed for said hearing will need to be submitted to the township, ideally prior to the date that the required ad will run in the paper. I recommend this be done this evening. Couple notes, I do advise that the submission deadline be more than 10 days prior to the scheduled hearing date to allow sufficient time for public notification, advertisement, and staff review. The earliest date staff feels confident an ad could be run in the Gazette is August 10. This means the public hearing should be scheduled no earlier than August 20. I'll add on that I did, Mr. Joel Rhodes with Epcun Communities is here this evening. I did speak to him prior to coming up here. He is comfortable with a materials submission date of this Monday, August 8. And then as regarding dates, we actually don't have a ton to choose from between the 20th and the 30th, looking at the hall availability, and when you knock out weekends, and then also, I have an evening, I'm not available. And that list gets even slimmer if the board wants to not have it the same week as your regular meeting, which would be September 1. So if you'd like to have a week, a little bit of time between meetings, we have dates available in the hall on Monday, August 22, or Wednesday, August 24. And I can read you the other dates, but I didn't know if you wanted to try to keep the meetings a little more separate.
I can do either of those, too.
I'm looking. I could do either, but I prefer Monday. Technically, I have curriculum night on Wednesday.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Rhodes just informed me, unfortunately, he has a conflict on the 22nd.
22nd, okay.
Which is that Monday.
Is it, what's available the week after?
Mr. Rhodes has a conflict, Monday, the 29th, Tuesday, the 30th, or Wednesday, the 31st.
Oh, so any of those days. Anybody have a preference? I mean, I can do the 24th.
Mr. Rhodes isn't available the 30th, he informed me. So that leaves, so we're down to the 24th, the 29th, or the 31st.
24th.
I cannot do the 31st.
All right, so it's 24th or the 29th. Anybody have a preference?
I can do either of those.
I prefer the 29th.
Monday, the 29th?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can make that work.
6:30 PM.
Here in the hall?
Yep.
So when will we get the material to review, the 8th?
Yeah, Mr. Rhodes had told me he was comfortable with that, so he could have it by the end of the day on the 8th, which means I'd have it emailed out either that day or the morning of the 9th. That would be about 20 days lead time.
And so you need, are you going to say deadline Monday at 4? Is that?
4:00 PM on the 8th. Is that? Yes.
Okay.
What time we have in the?
6:30.
6:30.
You good with that? All right, we're ready for, so I'll move to schedule a public hearing for CC 2022-03 courtyards at Big Walnut on August 29, 2022, at 6:30 PM at the Township Hall. The deadline for all materials to the trustees is August 8, 2022, at 4:00 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Antonett?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Second item on the agenda is, as I noted at the last meeting, we currently have a vacancy on the zoning commission due to the resignation of Charles Moore. The last meeting, you asked me to reach out to some of the current zoning commission alternates, as well as the BZA members, to see if there was any interest among the existing membership to be moved to that position. I did receive feedback from three individuals. Jeffrey Bishop, who is currently the, one of the zoning commission alternates. He was originally appointed to the BZA in 2018 and moved to the position of zoning commission alternate in 2020. We also received interest from Paul Hanson, who is a Board of Zoning Appeals alternate. He was originally appointed to the BZA appeals alternate position in 2020. And Teresa Yu, she's a Board of Zoning Appeals full member, originally appointed to the BZA as an alternate in 2013, and moved to the position of BZ appeals full member in 2015. Obviously, should the appointee be a current zoning commission alternate or Board of Zoning Appeals member, whether it be full or alternate, we'll be moving the vacancy from one spot to another. As discussed at your last meeting, Leslie did go ahead and advertise that we are opening the application window. The board set that deadline as August 15. So I will be back in front of you at the regular September meeting with any names we get as part of that list. So the board doesn't necessarily have to take any action this evening if they don't want to. It's really up for your discussion on, I guess, how you want to proceed with this matter.
My preference is to wait and see what kind of applicants we get, because I'd like to interview them all. I don't know what everybody else thinks.
I agree.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we'll just go ahead and wait, then. I'll be back in September for that one.
Very good.
Regarding the RFQ update, I sent you all out an email. We finally were able to, among a lot of emails, finally nail down a date between all the parties, between the board and the three firms. So as I communicated to you, the special meeting will be next week, Tuesday, August 9, 6:30 here in the hall. I have communicated that information to all three of the firms. It seemed like everyone's okay with that, and we just, Mr. Wise helped me pull the names out of the hat of determining the order of who was going to interview when.
Thank you.
So I sent out the special trustee meeting notice to the required mailing group today via email. We posted it to the building. It's on the website, so we should be good to go there. We don't have, for this type of meeting, we don't have to advertise it in the paper for clarification. So unless there's any questions with that, I'll move on. Final item on the agenda this evening is the Hoover watershed overlay continuation of the hearing. As we get into that, after met, due to accidental oversight, the ad that was supposed to run in the paper didn't make it. By the time I realized it and contacted the Gazette, it was just, they didn't get my message in time, and unfortunately, weren't able to get it in. So we do need to reschedule the date of that hearing. Fortunately, with sort of the RFQ process and the review still going on, I don't think this really necessarily delays anything, because we didn't really know when we were actually going to be talking about it again until we get through the RFQ process and the board makes that decision. So if you want, you could just go ahead and, as a procedural matter, you could schedule it for the special hearing date we just set for courtyards at Big Walnut, or if you don't want to conflate the two and confuse the public, we could just do what we've been doing and just put it on the agenda for the next regular meeting, knowing that you'll probably open it and then continue it. And hopefully, maybe by that meeting, we may have an idea of when we will set a date for substantive talks again on that item. Does the board have a preference?
I prefer, yeah, I prefer to just put it to our regular meeting rather than, I think there's going to be enough going on at the August 29 meeting.
I would agree with that.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that's fine. And I have the ad queued up on my computer right now, so as soon as I walk back over there, I'm going to make sure this time we actually do send it to the Gazette and we don't have that problem again.
Okay, very good.
Unless you have any further questions?
So my question is, once we get the attorneys figured out, how do we, will, the trustees will have to take some action, correct?
On the overlay?
On, I don't know. Do we, depending on the path, do we have to send something to the zoning commission?
Regarding?
If we, well, I mean, the whole point in, in hiring an attorney is to help us, guide us as to whether the overlay is the answer, or we just go through and fix the density.
So the way I envision that is at your next Hoover overlay meeting, where we actually are going to open the hearing and actually engage in discussion and not just continue it, is that, my thought would be you would have whatever attorney you've ended up picking at that meeting.
Yep.
And you would engage, we would obviously send them all the materials in advance, they're prepared, and you engage with all those questions I think we had during the prior meeting. And hopefully, they can give you enough feedback at that point where you can decide whether or not.
Which direction?
You want to continue on with the overlay, whether you want to just go ahead and, you know, say, no, this isn't the right thing, we're gonna, we're just not gonna approve it.
Okay.
Or whether you want to indefinitely table it.
Yep.
And while you maybe think about doing some other things, that way the public isn't totally left out, you know, wondering what's going on with it.
Okay.
That's the way I, I sort of see it playing out. And then if you decide you want to go to a different direction, then we basically start back at step one and start anew.
Okay.
If we make changes, does it go back to the zoning commission?
No, there's no, there's nothing in the revised code that, we've had that question come up before, that you don't really remand it back to the commission. You can pass a modified version of the document. I would say, you know, you certainly, I think, can modify anything the commission modified. I would be leery of going too far and just introducing a whole bunch of brand-new language or striking out all stuff that the zoning commission didn't talk about or touch. So it's a little bit of a gray area admittedly, but you do have, reserve the right, you have the right to, you know, if the zoning commission wanted it to be, say, X number and you want it to be Y number, I do think you have the right to modify that, and it would not have to go back to the zoning commission, as long as you obviously did it in a public hearing, open meeting setting.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Anything else for us?
Uh, no, I do not.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else before the board, before I go to announcements? All right. Announcements, August 11th, Communications Advisory Committee. August 23rd, we have a BZA committee. And the regular, next regular trustee meeting is August 1st, 2022. Sorry. Yep, September 21st. All right. At this time, I'll move to adjourn to executive session at 7:56 PM to conference with an attorney for the township concerning a dispute involving the township that is subject of pending or imminent court action, and to consider the appointment, employment, promotion, or compensation of a public employee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And at this time, I want to announce that invited to executive session is Chief Ponzi, the three trustees, our township administrator, Paul Wise, Human Resources, Linda Greco, Maintenance and Buildings and Grounds, Bob Matthews, and the township's attorney, Dave Rebenhoff. So at this time, I'll call for the roll.
Ms. Antonett?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes. Motion carries. At this time, we're adjourned into executive session. Very good.
Yeah. At this time, I'll move to return from executive session to the regular trustee meeting. The time is 9:12 p.m. Do I have a second?
Second.
Gosh. There is no more business to come before the board, so go ahead.
I have to take a roll on returning.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Antonaz?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes. I do have to announce that our fiscal officer, Pat Meyer, did join us for executive session along with the other members that I had mentioned before. So at this time, I'll move to adjourn this meeting at 9:13 p.m. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Antonaz?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes, we are adjourned at 9:13 p.m.